In the ordinance of life. Act 112 of the United States of America. And in every language which is used, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For the record this evening, Mr. Leymanburg will be absent along with the mayor. Personal appeals, part one. Anyone with a personal appeal, please step over and sign in, state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
I'm Anthony Golden, who live on 1302 South Tinsley in Mass. I have two questions asked, or I should answer some. Nathan Derrick, Nathan Brown. You've done an outstanding job down at, you know what I'm talking about?
Flag Day ceremony.
Flag Day Association.
Thank you.
Outstanding job. And Frank Sadovitz, and Josephine, and her crew, they've done a fantastic job down there. Had all the flags up and everything. I don't know where they're starting. I've got all kinds of things to think about, and I don't know where they're starting. I attended the Parks and Rec meeting June the 5th. And I questioned things about, June the 3rd, at the arts meeting, there was a concert down there. And the Lichi was supposed to have a fall game, so they turned all the lights on. And around quarter of six, it started to rain, and the lights were all burning down there. And around 6 o'clock, they'd come down in buckets, I mean, they poured. And I thought, oh my God, if this don't knock out the fuses or blow out those lights, it's gonna be a miracle. And I asked the councilman, who was in charge of this, I said, you know, I get disturbed as a taxpayer when I see a lot of these things. They're owing for hours, and thank God, I mean, that they didn't blow out. That it would've cost extra number of dollars to really place all of that. But anyhow, then I, I was thinking, I wonder if all the people that volunteer, I think they all should have an obligation. I think if you're a volunteer, you should have some kind of an obligation. And at the June 3rd concert down there, there was nobody down there, and I had talked to Brian about it. And it's amazing. But I had another question. At the Parks and Rec Commission meeting, two fellows, three people know that, there were two people that sat up here. And they were working, and I'm watching the clock there. And they're talking and having a good time, and so it's 16 minutes after. It was 16 minutes, and instead of 10, it was 16. And then somebody must've said something, and then they left. Then another group of four come up here, and then they started working, and I'm watching the clock there. So it's 23 minutes, they're all sitting here. So then they finally come to me. So I asked a couple of questions, and I asked Leymanburg, I said, how come we never have a reporter at these meetings? I said, 90%, or 99% of the public taxpayers don't even know when these people have, when you people have meetings. I mean, I'm gonna say maybe 100% of the people don't do it. But I asked, I talked to a little guy, I said, well, your five minutes are up. And I'm thinking, now wait a minute, these people that are up here, they've got all the time they want it. Am I a different character, that I don't get that kind of time? Barry, do I take different time, or am I wrong?
What's your comment?
Tony, this is a very simple question. Where on the agenda were you? Those people were on the agenda, they had issues that we were there to discuss, talk about at the table. When I call for personal appeals, just like you're up here right now, you get five, five minutes. So you weren't one of the agenda items we were going to be discussing, and many of those, actually, I'm surprised that they're even as short as you stated they were. I thought they were actually considerably longer. You came up for a second personal appeal. Five minutes is what we asked for, after five minutes?
Now wait, Barry, remember what you said to me and Leymanburg, oh no, we have a special meeting come up. You had a special meeting come up then. You cut me off. You cut me off, and you and Leymanburg both said you have a special meeting. Then I said to Leymanburg, he said, that's not my job. And I thought to myself, all of you guys, what is your job? We, oh, now wait, Brian, let me tell him, I'm done talking here, okay? I, as a taxpayer, and a resident of this and that, you people all take an oath on a book. I watch you all the time here, when you get sworn in. Now think about it, when you do that, you are a resident and a thing to support or do things for the community. You are a servant to all the people in the mass. Not for your special people, to all the people. And you know who's paying your salary? Taxpayers.
Salary.
Homeowners. To me, I know my minutes are almost up, but I have nothing against it, but I don't want to be treated any different, more or less than anybody else. That's all I ask, I don't want to be treated any different.
Mr. Haltseker, we have your hand up.
I just wanted to clarify, when Mr. Leymanburg said, that's not my job, he was referring to making reporters come to a meeting. That was because you said, who makes the reporters come to the meeting? And that's when Mr. Leymanburg said, that's not my job. He wasn't referring to anything but making reporters come to that meeting.
Oh, is that what you?
That's what he was talking about.
See, I took it the other way, and I thought, well, what the hell is his job?
That's what he was talking about, about making reporters come.
Okay, so like I said, I don't want to be treated any different than any other resident in this community, but remember, you people are all servants of this community, okay?
Mr. Barrett, you have one more.
Tony, you were treated no differently than anyone else.
Okay.
No different. Actually, many of the people that sat there weren't even residents of the mass.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else with a personal appeal?
Good job.
John Dotches, 559 Minor. Just a comment, I guess, on the shade tree ordinance that's gonna be going in, I guess, for a vote this time. My concern would be that the way that it's handled, as far as making the individual homeowner pay for that, the concern that's going on, you would like a tree wherever it's supposed to be, and it happens to be in front of somebody's house, like it always is, and then that homeowner is responsible for that fee. This is something in my eyes where the government body decides, we'd like to do this kind of a thing. But now you're saying, well, even 10 feet into somebody's property, we're gonna take the control of that and say, we might want a tree here. And you have to pay for it. This, in my eyes, is something where I think that the whole town, if it's really approved by everybody, and they'd like to see the trees, that that get rolled right into taxes. That's a beautification that goes to everybody, it's like sidewalks, I feel the same with that. If we need sidewalks, and the governing body decides we need to have sidewalks, it would be good just to put that right into the taxes. And everybody pays their fair share for the privilege of a common good. So that would be my concern with this. I don't think it's correct to actually stick a homeowner with that responsibility and cost when they might not even be able to afford it at that time. That's encroaching again, now it's 10 feet down, maybe later it'll be 15, God knows where it can go, that's trouble with that. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with a personal appeal? There are none. Moving to community minute, any member of council who'd like to move forward for a community minute? Just a reminder that our July 2nd and August 6th council meetings and budget and finance committee meetings are canceled. Dr. Leymanburg?
One item, yeah.
Dr. Woodell, I'm sorry, I called you Dr. Leymanburg. I apologize.
I apologize for that, trust me. I don't joke, or something.
Thanks. For the Arts Commission, just a reminder to the community that this weekend, with a Sunday at the farmer's market, the Arts Commission will have all six of the rain barrels at the market for everyone to view and to bid on. The pin sheets are downstairs during business hours here in Borough Hall. There are six barrels, they're gorgeous, five of them are in the Clock Building windows. Again, thank you, Jean Clock, for allowing us to set them up there, so we could see them, you bid on them downstairs. Five of the, five of the barrels have bids on, there's only one to dozen so far, which is great. So we've just covered our costs already, so we hope to see everybody at the market on Sunday, and have some bidding, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to move forward? There are none, special presentations, we have none this evening. Which brings us to the reading of the minutes from the June 4th council meeting. There's our motion to dispense with the formal reading of those minutes. Motion by Mr. Brown, is there a second? Second by Dr. Woodell, discussion. All those in favor? We have six ayes, additions or corrections? There are none, motion to adopt is drafted. Motion by Dr. Woodell, is there a second? Second by Mr. Brown, discussion. All those in favor? We have six ayes. Decision on this, we have no bids this evening. Communications, first letter in our binder is a community event information sheet coming from, I believe it's the Main Street Partners. Mr. Barrett, this is on your agenda for this evening? This is in reference to a clambake that the Main Street Partners would like to hold on Sunday, June 29th. Do you want to hold this for your committee report?
Uh, yeah, that's fine.
Second letter comes from the Lehigh Sager Bund. John Leico, representing the Lehigh Sager Bund, hits in reference to an event that they also will be holding out in the park. And I believe, Mr. Barrett, this is also under your committee report as well?
That's correct. Both of these letters came to us at the, at our meeting.
The next item comes from the Lehigh Valley Soapbox Derby Association. On behalf of the Lehigh Valley Soapbox Derby Association, I'd like to thank Borough of Mass for its many years of support and cooperation. We're fortunate for the privilege of using Ridge Street for our racing events. Is that time of year again to plan our upcoming derby season? I'd like to request the use of Ridge Street between Keystone Avenue and State Road to hold the 36th Soapbox Derby Race on Sunday, August 25th, or Saturday, August 25th and Sunday, August 26th. We will leave Ridge Street closed from approximately 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on both days. If you have any questions or concerns, contact Todd Barloff, he is the director this year of the Derby. I believe we have a recommendation coming from Budget and Finance dealing with this, and that is under Mr. Haltseker's report.
Yes, ma'am.
The next item comes from Rachel Miller. It's a Mass Board and Commission's information sheet, she would like to be considered for the Special Entertainment Committee. Mr. Barrett, I will be referring this to your committee. I don't believe that's listed on your agenda for this evening, I believe this came in after your meeting.
That's correct.
I will refer this to your committee now. I have nothing further for communications. Mr. Happy, you have anything with the communications? Any member of council have anything for communications this evening? There are none. Borough Engineers Report, we have no engineer this evening, so the report progresses. Solicitors Report, turn your back.
Just very briefly, a couple of things that I'd like to point out. The new Borough Code has been adopted and will be in effect at our next meeting. There are going to be some changes, and we'll slowly go through them, and we'll pick them up as we go. I've already read it and familiarized myself with it, but I don't think you really need a full outline of it. There's some increased powers for the mayor, changes in civil service, there are some other issues like speakerphone. You can still have a speakerphone for an absent councilperson, however, they cannot count towards a quorum. So you have to have a live quorum, and then if one leaves during that, then the speakerphone person counts. It is very unusually worded, but nevertheless, we will need to have a quorum at all times to get started, but a speakerphone will be used. So there's little tricky things like that that are in the new code, and we'll get through it. The other matter that I wanted to briefly talk about is, I believe this is 27 Spruce Street, I have been working on that with Tom. I know there's been a lot of complaints. He is going to be meeting with their council, and we're gonna try to make a final decision, see if we can resolve the issues amicably. If it can't be resolved, then a civil enforcement action will have to be done. What we're trying to do is avoid litigation under, that could arguably come under the Fair House Act. And I don't, if you want more detailed information, I'd rather do that privately with you, so you can ask me about that later, or if I call me, that's fine. That's all I have to report, the rest is in my report. Many of the things you were saying, obviously, were only two weeks ago that I reported today, but there are some changes.
Fine, thank you. Unfinished Business, Part One. We have nothing on the agenda under unfinished business. New business, Ordinance 1086. This is under letter F in our binders. This is an ordinance authorizing and establishing attorney fees. Dr. Woodell, this is coming out of your committee from General Administration?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you like to give us an overview of this ordinance?
We talked about this at the General Administration meeting. Currently, it's a correct or wrong. I think we have a certain process in hand now, replacing the against property, whatever reason we handle it internally. And what you suggested during the committee meeting, kind of gives a rundown of it. I think you do this in some other.
I do it every, in Townships and in boroughs. The basic concept is that the delinquent party, be they, I realize you don't collect, serve as your delinquent tax collector, but surely you'll have the ordinance in place for that. So Part A deals with taxes, Part B deals with municipal claims. Municipal claims are for municipal services, utilities, wheat cutting, things like that. The people who are not paying these things, if you don't elect to use a magistrate to try to collect it, and some places it's much easier not to, with like, in multifamily housing and things like that, you definitely want to go with liens. When properties are going up for sale, you want to get that lien on. Municipal lien is a unique creature, it jumps ahead of all other liens and enclosures. It even goes ahead of a mortgage, even a purchase money mortgage, it goes ahead of. So you get paid first, so you gotta get that on there, and the whole idea is that you can pass by statute, pay an ordinance that sets the fees and charges, so that all the work that we do for it gets paid for by the delinquent party and not by you. And that's, that's really what this is. So basically, this is using my normal rate scale, because unlike the MBC, it's not limited to what my solicitor's rate is. So this is what I would normally charge a person who came in, and so there is really no reason not to charge that for a delinquent party on it. We're very efficient at it, we can collect it, I don't know, you know how municipal liens work? But we file a lien, it's good for five years. If they transfer the property, or it's foreclosed, or anything, we get paid at that point. If, however, and you can revive it, by the way, for another five years, and another five years each time. But more importantly, if you really want to, you can file what's called as a riscariatfascius, which is an old RIT procedure, which allows you, it's basically a complaint, but it's under the written and affidavit procedure that we used to have in Pennsylvania. It's the only thing that's left. And you file that, they have 15 days to answer, if they don't, you take judgment, and you can sell our house, to pay the lien. This is in rem, which means it's the building, it's the structure that really owes the debt, not the person. So when a person goes bankrupt, although they can personally clear the debt, they can't get rid of the in rem lien. So there are some advantages to filing the liens and to having people who know what they're doing with them. So, you know, I like to do them, take care of it. My paralegal is tremendous at it, and I spent some time, I think, talking to Teresa, is that her name? Teresa, and I explained to her all of the procedures, the ins and outs, and the good things, and the way things can be run efficiently. This simply is an ordinance that you need to have to be able to pass those expenses through. In other words, boom, you don't have to worry about it. In fact, we don't collect it from you, we don't bill you for it, we get them from the delinquent party.
Okay.
I was gonna add, I think when we talked about it at the day meeting, it was in the single digits the number of times that this would come up each year.
It's very unusual. My recollection is over the years, that it's typically somebody who has, you know, abuse or have something for numerous times. This is not the first time, typically it's not a first time offender. It's somebody we dealt with for years and years and years, for a time, filed a lien, moved it across, or something, and then it was filed. We did talk about this at the day meeting, we wanted to recommend 301 to council board.
This is scheduled for first reading this evening, so is there a motion to read Ordinance 1086 in short title? Motion by Mr. Barrett, is there a second? Second by Dr. Woodell. Discussion, all those in favor? We have six ayes. This is Ordinance 1086, an ordinance authorizing and establishing attorney fees for the collection of municipal liens and tackling tax liens and establishing the rate of interest.
Madam President, I have one brief comment. There was a recent case about six months ago out of Commonwealth Court, where they held where you don't establish the penalty interest rate, if you don't take action on it, it will be presumed to be zero, even though we always presumed it to be 10%. So now it is going to be 10%, just like it always has been in the past, but the common law court held that if you don't have it in an ordinance, it's zero.
Okay, so we're covered with this, because ours specifically states not to exceed 10%.
Actually, it starts right out with it, yes.
Okay, very good. Is there a motion to, uh, Dr. Ordinance 1086, is red? Motion by Dr. Woodell. Second by Mr. Barrett. Discussion. This is a roll call, though, Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Schubser?
Aye.
Dr. Woodell?
Aye.
Mr. Haltseker?
Aye.
Mr. Barrett?
Aye.
This is Gilbert, votes aye, we have six ayes. Mr. Happy, if we could advertise that for second reading for our second meeting of July. Unfinished Business, Part Two. Ordinance 1037. An ordinance dealing with water fowl. Mr. Barrett, I believe this comes out of your committee? The Part Two left?
I actually thought we were just going to be further reviewing.
You don't want to have this as first reading this evening?
The motion, the motion of those that I, I took for.
Yeah, to draft the ordinance.
To just draft it, not to have it for first reading?
I think we should go with first reading, the sooner the better. There were 40 geese in the road on the way here, and I had to stop, and it was way too dead here.
We brought it up as, I mean, the discussion was there, I mean, it is the intent to get to that point. I thought we were going to review it one more time at the committee level, but it'll come up for second reading after a committee meeting anyhow, so this is fun.
I just have a procedural question for the solicitor. This was, this actual ordinance, number and everything was tabled back in 2008. Do we need a motion to remove this from the table and start fresh?
Well, under Roberts' rules, all things must be removed from the table at the next meeting. If you table something, you look at Roberts' rules, it says it has, if it's not removed from the table, it dies, and it's no longer on the agenda. So you have now put it on the agenda, this is a brand-new item.
Very good, so this is up for first reading this evening? Thank you for the clarification. This is Ordinance 1037, it's dealing with feeding of water fowl. Did you want to discuss this any further, Mr. Barrett?
All I can say is that, I mean, this concern is an item that has been brought up countless times.
Numerous years.
And, yeah, and it hasn't gotten any better. We've tried a number of remedies, really taking the most effective, or the most cost-effective approaches. None of them have been effective, so now it's time to move further to try and make, make it so that we can actually use furnace dam and not have it be covered in.
And it's clean?
Yes, exactly.
Mr. Haltseker?
It was the recommendation of the state that the first thing to do was to outlaw feeding of wildlife, before, before doing anything else. And I guess we kind of felt guilty outlawing because certain people were feeding, and I know the mayor does not feel strongly about outlawing feeding, but the number of.
Mayors don't support this ordinance this evening?
Good, the number of geese there right now is ridiculous, you can't even walk in furnace dam without.
Okay.
Could I just suggest something, this is what being considered your first reading?
Yes.
This is the first time I've seen it. I would, I would probably want to put a minimum fine in, because, I tell you, magistrates are gonna have a, you know, if somebody's there on a Sunday with their child, paying, you know, feeding the, the Canadian geese, they might just say, well, just give them that. 502, but it says, shall be fined an amount of two, and including $100.
So you're saying, I'm not sure.
I'm not sure what that means, up to and including. That to me means from zero to 100. I think it should say a minimum, a minimum fine of, you know, $50 or $100, or whatever you want to make it, and up to $300.
Okay. Well, we do have this coming back to the committee to look at it further, if we can add it, then we can talk as a committee, determine.
I think what's there.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, that's, I don't have that number, I think it's better to discuss that then, but you're basically saying, fine a minimum.
Well, right now, to me, that's ambiguous. I, I think it was intended to say, to make it $100, but I don't know.
What's your wish, Mr. Barrett? Do you want to take this back to committee, or you want to make a change and have it for first reading this evening?
First reading, and then it's just gonna be a number, and it comes back on the second reading that it needs to be changed. I'm fine with it, Karen, so.
Fine.
I'm fine with it, moving forward.
Then we need a motion to read in short time. Did you have a question, Mr. Schubser?
Yeah. What determines a person violating? Like, who makes that decision? The police. But, I mean, if someone's there feeding, and they're gone, maybe by the time this officer gets there.
You can bring a charge based on information received even in a citation. So in other words, if someone wants to, feels that strongly about it, and sitting there, wants to seize, you know, Jack Smith feeding the geese, he writes down Jack Smith feeding the geese at 10-8 on, you know, June 15th. Writes it down, takes it to a police officer, and asks the police officer to prosecute it. And the police still have the discretion not to, but that can be done that way. And of course, you can always file a private criminal complaint, but then you have to go through the DA.
So, yeah, I mean, it takes the residents to want to adhere to the rules, and those that live in the area that are concerned, certainly call the police if they see someone doing it.
That's normally what happens, is the people who have, you know, kids trying to play in that area, and they get the goose droppings all over them. Those are the ones that are gonna be reporting.
Fine. So we need a motion to read this ordinance in short time. Motion by Mr. Haltseker, is there a second? Second by Mr. Barrett. Discussion, all those in favor? We have six ayes. This is Ordinance 1037, an ordinance amending the provisions of Chapter 2 with the addition of Sections 501 and 502, prohibiting the feeding of water fowl on Borough Old Properties. So a motion to adopt as read. Motion by Mr. Barrett, second. Second by Mr. Haltsefer. Discussion. Mr. Brown.
Yeah. A few years ago, since this has been up, the signage, I believe we had discussion along with what that would look like. Do you have...
Actually, the signage that was discussed then was, we were discussing a way to do this as a suggestive manner and it says, please do not feed geese.
And we changed it to waterfowl, right?
We might have, but, yeah, now it's just saying that it's prohibited. So it was, the reason why we debated that was, it was not, no, not everyone was in favor of making it against law. It was against, just a suggest, it was basically just a suggestion not to do it. That's where the terminology...
Well, they, all the signage being out of parks and rural property, or is it just gonna be specific to take it as just a hall?
Well, it's at the hall. I'm... I think the only issue exists in furnace dam and I know that we have waterfowl and...
Right. Do we want to put a hall? That, that's my question is, or do we want to be specific?
It could be in the rules, but there's, there's really no other place that they are, that they showed up and they became a problem. I mean, this, they, they, it's their living habitat. I mean, they go back to the same, same spot, so. If they started to spread, then I think at one time they might have been something like four years ago. That was eliminated.
Any further discussion? This is a roll call vote. Mr. Haltsefer.
Aye.
Mr. Barrett.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Shubson.
Aye.
Dr. Woodell.
Aye.
We have six ayes.
When this goes back to, Lady Madam President, you might want to consider the term waterfowl and whether maybe a, a more definitive definition, like waterfowl including but not limited to wild eating. If someone has a pet duck and is walking around with it, I mean, that, you're, you're not gonna get them arrested because that's not, not a wild fowl. And he, I mean, you get into all these weird situations and I, I would be a little bit more careful with it, the waterfowl. I mean, a waterfowl. There's, what about mermaids or what about? I mean, there's, there's, there's tons of different things. I know what you really want. You don't want the geese.
Or the ducks.
Or the ducks.
If I'm taking my duck to the pond, it's gonna be on a leash.
I have...
No parts allowed?
Well, we're covered there as well. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on. Ordinance 1085. This is an ordinance establishing a tree fund. Dr. Woodell, this also comes out of your committee.
Madam President, just a little bit. I asked you especially why I asked you this is tabled on March 17th.
So this will be your first reading?
It's your first reading.
This is still the first reading.
Yes, sir.
This is the ordinance we talked about before regarding tree fund. The only sticking point that we had was the amount that although we take, if they requested not to put a tree back in the public right of way. It's 3A, when commission grants a property owner's request to not plant a tree to replace it with a tree, the property owner shall make a payment into the tree fund in the amount of $200. There's a discussion with the mayor. Committee talked about it. J committee talked about it, recommended making money. Pepe also added number seven to it. There are fewer clauses as well as a rate of severance clause. So this is essentially the same ordinance we have back in March, it's a different number and something that... Is there anything else you want to say about this?
Just to, just to establish one fact, and that is you had an ordinance on the books for years that requires people to replace the tree. What this ordinance is doing is giving them the option that they don't want to pay to replace a tree for the fee of $200, they will not be forced to do it. And with that $200 the ordinance establishes that the shade tree commission should find another location and if you need to plant a tree. That's the purpose of your ordinance. Whether or not you agree with it, it's up to you, but that's the purpose of, of your ordinance.
Do you have, Mr. Pepe, also any about how the money is handled and has to go to the borough?
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Dr. Woodell's clarification. Let's make sure that I'm on the right track here. We are giving the shade tree commission the ability to, to determine if the property owner is allowed or not allowed to plant that tree and if they, if the property owner is awarded that permission not to, not to plant the tree, then they have to pay the $200. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And a tree fund.
And it should be clear that you have to have an ascertainable standard, as you recall, and I have said that before. The ascertainable standard here is that it creates a hazard or is inappropriate for some reason. And if they can't prove that, then they, they should be made to plant the tree. You can't just discretionarily say, okay, we don't, you don't want to plant a tree, we don't really care, give us our $200, you know.
Well, that's, that's not how this ordinance reads. If, if, what the ordinance reads is that if it presents a clear danger, if there's a potential danger of planting a tree, then the person will not be forced to pay the $200. However, if they conveniently just don't want to replant the tree, then the $200 will be taken.
Mr. Shubson.
I just have one question. Is there anything in this ordinance that states that basically will protect the citizens from something that's out of their control? An accident? Car hits the tree, takes the tree out of, no fault of their own?
Something like that. And correct me if I wrong, so sort of, but something like that would actually be on that person's car insurance. I mean, that, that would be...
So the person who caused the damage would then have the liability for that?
Okay.
Anything, and also, like, for instance, companies that come in and cut the trees, trim the trees, the tree happens to die because of the trimming. Are they still responsible for that?
Depends on the contract.
You're talking like P P L?
Yeah, or anyone that, that they, they hire.
Usually, it's usually P P L's contractor.
Yeah, they subcontract out to, to another company.
And the, the intention of the ordinance, and I haven't, I haven't read it here in a couple of days, but the intention of the ordinance is that while deciding to replant the tree, if there's wires overhead, first of all, there's a list of approved trees as to the height and also if it does present that, that possibility, I think provision gives the shade tree commission the opportunity to say, you don't have to plant a tree there.
Any other way to feel?
Right.
They're happy that they, they're real actions? Okay.
But, but... I don't think they should have to replace the tree.
I am still concerned, and I voiced it before, I'll do it again, that, that you really need some kind of ascertainable standard so it's not simply at your whim, where you say, okay, you don't have to do it just because you're my buddy and, or I don't like you so therefore I'm, I'm gonna turn it down and you replant that tree.
But I think, I think the ordinance provides anybody the opportunity to do it. If you don't want to do it, then this...
But what's the standard?
Well, I don't, I, I think that is the standard is it simply if you don't want to do it, then you have the opportunity to pay the $200 and replant somewhere else.
That to me runs afoul of what Judge Black or Boo on your sidewalk ordinance.
I'd like to disagree. I think where it says, when the commission grants a property owner's request to not plant a tree to replace a tree. I think what the commission has granted that...
Based on what?
Based on the, the conditions that exist that are described. I believe it's, it is clear. Well, I understand where you're coming from.
I, I, all I'm doing is just, it's my job to, to, to tell you what I believe the law is on, on, on having clear standards for this. I'm not advocating this or not advocating it. All I'm trying to do is make it, if we have it, we should be right.
What's your wish, Dr. Woodell? It's here for first reading this evening.
Yes, we would like to, the first reading is recommended to counsel three zero by the general administration committee with the, the changes that we discussed.
Is there a motion to read ordinance 1085 in short title? Motion by Dr. Woodell, is there a second? Second by Mr. Barrett. Discussion. Mr. Barrett?
If we could, at our next G A meeting, just have the discussion of creating a standard or have that debate further.
We can review and make sure we're, we're satisfied that, that that standard is there.
Any further discussion? All was in favor? We have six ayes. This is ordinance 1085 and ordinance establishing a tree fund and authorizing the shade tree commission to collect money and will require the replacement of trees. Is there a motion to adopt, adopt ordinance 1085 as read? Motion by Dr. Woodell, is there a second? Second by Mr. Barrett. Discussion. This is a roll call vote. Mr. Barrett.
Aye.
Mr. Haltsefer.
Aye.
Dr. Woodell.
Aye.
Mr. Shubson.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mrs. Gilman, votes aye. We have five ayes and no one opposed. Items not on the agenda, subjects are ruled in. Any member of council have an item that they'd wish to bring forward? Attorney none, mayor's report. Mayor reports progress. Attorney reports public works. Mr. Lehman Burton. Mr. Lehman Burton's absent. Mr. Brown, would you like to give the public works report?
Sure. Thank you, Madam President. At our last meeting on June 7th, we discussed the water meter rates again. Also, we have discussed some other billing issues, but nothing for further action by council. I'll report progress for public works.
Thank you. And I believe our next meeting is July 5th. That review, correct?
Yep.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, that is correct.
Thank you. Health sanitation and conservation. Mr. Shubson.
Thank you. We met on June, June 15th, Friday. And we went over the donation that we'll be receiving from Rodale. I'd like to thank Jeff Clapper for writing the letter and obtaining the donation in response to getting the biz and the decals for the recycling container. With the $2,000, based on the quotes that I currently have in, we would be able to get 16 barrels produced for the $2,000 that we have. And we discussed the heating system quote that we'll be looking to get and the rest I'll report progress.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Mr. Barrett.
All right. We'll do this systematically. Yeah, exactly. Fortunately, no, we've got lots of stuff to burn on. Most of them are short items. They're free to probably provoke some discussion. We already took care of, if you're following your agenda, letter B, we'll jump down to letter E, which is to reappoint Michelle Steiner to the Special Entertainment Commission. She's also the liaison to the Parks and Rec Commission. I'll make a motion to recommend Michelle Steiner for reappointment to the Special Entertainment Commission with a two-year term expiring 6th, 7th, 2014.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Haltsefer. Discussion. All was in favor? We have six ayes.
The second, I'll make it in the form of a motion to reappoint Dean Greenwall to the Parks and Rec Commission for a three-year term expiring 5, 1, 2015.
In effect, is there a form of a motion as well?
Yes.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Haltsefer. Discussion. All was in favor? We have six ayes.
All right, the next is to appoint a new summer park counselor, Erin Antrim, who's been with us since the start of the Parks and Rec, excuse me, since the starts of the Summer Parks Program. Got a full-time job and is unable to fulfill her position this year. And one of our previous applicants from our first go-round of interviewing was Jamie Shive. She was basically the next on the list and I'm going to make a recommendation. I'll place in the form of a motion to hire Jamie Shive to the Summer Parks Counsel.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Haltsefer. Discussion. All was in favor? We have six ayes.
And if we could write a thank you letter, if we haven't already, to Erin Antrim, who really in my mind has kind of led that group. It's definitely a, a loss for the group, not to say that anyone else can't fill that void if, if they want to try, but Erin definitely did a very good job. I know the kids really enjoyed having her there as well, so. Next is to appoint or to hire lifeguard Joe Bargenio, Bargenio, and at his rate...
725?
At a rate of $7.25. Place that in the form of a motion.
Is it 725 or 775?
I'm sorry, 775.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there a second? Second by Mr. Holtsaper, discussion? All those in favor? There's six ayes.
Next on your agenda is to hire a summer parks employee, Matthew Stone, at a rate of $7.25. Place that in the form of a motion.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Holtsaper, discussion? All those in favor? Six ayes.
We received in the beginning of our packet, a letter from Jack Loyco about an event that they're hosting. We had already approved the event. They, in trying to find some of the drinks that they're going to be offering, found that they can only get them in a bottle. Glass is not permitted down in the park, so we are permitting them to have bottles down there, yet they'll be solely responsible for the bottles. They'll be pouring it into a glass and then disposing of the bottles properly, so we did not feel that it would be a concern. So I'll place that in the form of a motion to permit bottles, glass bottles, for their event.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Holtsaper, discussion? All those in favor? There's six ayes.
Next item is the David Krepsel Foundation Motorcycle Run. I think it was the last meeting they had written us a letter requesting a fee waiver for the Parks Pavilion. When we discussed this at the Parks and Rec Committee, we felt in keeping with protocol, it was not fair to waive that fee, so they said that they were willing to pay the fee for the Parks Pavilion, but we did extend them the offer. It's later in the season, I believe it's October 7th, if I remember correctly. It's later in the season, park is essentially already closed, that if the event grew very large and they needed additional pavilions, there would be no fee for them to use any of the other pavilions in that area. And none of the others, I believe, were rented out yet either. So I'll place that in the form of a motion to waive the fees if they do need to rent any other pavilions, but they will be paying the Parks Pavilion.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Holtsaper, discussion? Mr. Holtsaper.
His request, Letter P asks for one additional pavilion. It's just for October 7th. It says, "I would like to request that the Arts Pavilion and an additional pavilion." So asking for one more.
In your committee, you guys had approved of the free.
Okay. So let's just leave it, I mean, I prefer to leave it at three in case if it grows to a larger size.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? There's six ayes.
Next request comes from the Mays Street Partners. It's for a free concert on July 9th, 2012, it's a Monday. And they would like to, because of the length of the event, would like to extend the park hours until 10 o'clock. And that was a 3-0 vote to permit that, and I'll place that in the form of a motion to extend the hours of the park on July 9th until 10:00 p.m. for this event.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Holtsaper, discussion? All those in favor? There's six ayes.
The next is also, also comes from the, also comes from the Mays Street Partners, and they're hosting a clam bait community park, and they're requesting to use canopies. Canopies are something that need approval. It was a 3-0 vote to permit the Mays Street Partners to have canopies at their event.
Are you placing that vote for these motions?
I am, yes.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Holtsaper, discussion?
Do we talk about how many canopies, size, attachment?
Two to four, 10 by 10, I think was the requirement.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? There's six ayes.
Another request here, very similar to the one that we just addressed from Mr. Loyco's letter. Mays Street Partners having a beer fest on October 6th, 2012, and they're requesting to use bottles in the same manner where they'd be pouring it into a glass, if I remember, it's almost identical, is that correct?
Yes.
Place that in the form of a motion to permit them to have glass bottles down there and pour it into a glass that we didn't care of, we're securing the bottles.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Holtsaper, discussion? All those in favor? There's six ayes.
Letter O on your agenda was canceled, so we do not need to address that. The next item is the Rubber Ducky Derby. This was a letter that we also received. We met at 6:30 to handle this letter. It's an event that's going to take place on Saturday, August 11th, with a rain date of Saturday, August 25th, 2012. It is an evening event, but they would be there all day. They'd actually start the derby at around 5:00. If you look in your packet, you'll see exactly the part of the stream that they plan to use. So the motion was to permit them to use the general area that is specified on the map, as well as permit a small 10 by 10 canopy.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Holtsaper, discussion? All those in favor? There's six ayes.
And just for the record, on the letter, they also requested a dunk tank. The only thing they had to provide was insurance. It's not in your packet that you had, but that we did receive insurance information. And then the last item is amendment to the current fee structure for community pool. Hopefully you had a chance to look over this. It was a rather lengthy discussion, which was prompted by a request from the police chief, as well as the public works director, after concerns about what goes on down at the pool. This is not a new concern. I would say the entire time that I've been on Borough Council, I have almost, the day that the park opens, I've heard the concerns, phone calls, letters, whatever the case might be, and it's been going on for a prolonged period of time. One of the things that is often stated is that it's out-of-town residents, and that the residents would like to see their residents there. I know a number of residents that are not necessarily interested in going to the pool right now, because they don't like what goes on down at the pool. So what we made the change to is strictly the non-resident rates, which is broken into two tiers, one being East Penn School District resident and non-resident. So hopefully you looked over that. If there are no questions, I'll place it in the form of a motion to approve the entire resolution 2012-17, effective July 1st, 2012.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Holtsaper, discussion? Mr. Brown.
Yeah, Mr. Barrett, I just wanted a quick ask. Were there any other numbers that were discussed besides fees?
Yes, substantially higher.
Substantially higher?
Yes, it was recommended higher. After a long debate, we kind of split the difference of where the recommendation was coming from. We also kind of compared it to what's out there. It did change the borough resident rate, which was the focus, we'd like to see borough residents use their own pool. So that's where the higher number for non-residents went.
If I understand this correctly, we're changing rates sort of in its stream here.
That's correct.
And there's some notes in here about the issues that come up with that. Your discussions, you're confident that it's not going to come back to haunt us in some way, or that this is going to be a smooth transition to the rates get to.
Sure. One of the concerns being just implementing it in general. It does create a new caveat, one that someone has to be at the pool, look up the resident, make sure that address is that. Also then, East Penn residents, which is a substantially larger database, and then concluding if they are East Penn or non-resident. So one of the things that was our convincing factor is that Mr. Clapper, who did present this to us, said that he will make sure that, it might have a few bumps and bruises in the beginning, like any new thing that gets implemented, but that he will make sure that this goes as smoothly as possible. And he did emphasize that, that he thought, he felt confident that he could make it work out, but there will definitely be a small learning curve.
You did say a little random from Christine Snyder, she does have some concerns. I do want to make sure, make sure that I voiced those to you, that I told her that I would definitely point that out to you. Yeah, I think Christine has some valid concerns. I also think that our chief of police has some very valid concerns as well. And, you know, I think the question is, first of all, is this something you want to do? And secondly, if you do adopt it, is it something that we can pull off? And again, I think that's Christine's big concern, is can we pull it off? Being reassured by our public works director that he has a plan in place, if you do adopt it. And secondly, just as Mr. Barrett had said, it should go smooth for the most part, but there will be some bumps and bruises to get started. But I also think that you'd have those same bumps and bruises whether you adopted it in 2012, right now, or next year. And I think that no matter what, you're going to run into similar issues.
Here's my question then, if I may. What specifically is going to be done, and if this company has a plan in place? What is this plan? What's going to happen? What are we going to see differently when this is implemented?
I'd be more specific in what...
Well, if there's going to be this transition, what's Mr. Clapper doing? He says, "I have a plan in place, I'm taking care of this." What's going to happen?
Sure, well, I mean, one of the concerns which I think is outlined in there is just that there's the potential for someone to be unhappened, that they had to wait in line for a bit of time. That is going to occur, there's almost no way to avoid it, there's going to be some time revamping it. Those are the types of things that are going to come about, like Mr. Clapper just said, if you do it at the beginning of the season, mid-season, or at the very end of the season, those things are always going to exist. As far as an actual plan goes, we left that in the hands of Mr. Clapper to...
And I did discuss that with him. One of the things that he's going to do at the very beginning is, he will place a parks employee down there during some peak hours for the first couple of weeks as this gets started, to help with checking identifications, helping the person at the front desk checking with identifications as well, pointing people towards, you know, they're talking about sending members that have passes to a different gate to go in, if there's a longer line, but sending them that way while the paying customer would be going to the main line. And he had mentioned that he'd probably spend two or three weeks doing that, to try to ease the transition with them. There's going to have to be a little bit of retraining of the front desk employees, in which case, you know, we'll have to speak with management staff tomorrow morning, if you're adopted, to get that rolling right away. I don't think that that's as difficult as Christine is concerned with, but it is going to be transitioned.
I guess why the transition is, at least at school district, how would I know that in a couple of minutes?
You're able to get, you're able to get a list of, there's outlying addresses, so you have a basic list of, because I know that, like, East Penn School District, there's some out-of-town addresses in East Penn School District. So we're going to have to pull, possibly from the tax department, some outlying addresses. You know, up until this point, on this road, is East Penn School District. Those are things that we're going to have to have in place. Is this 100% full proof? Absolutely not. I won't be the first person to tell you that. I think that Mr. Clapper and Mr. Faust both said that. But we can get that list of outlying addresses to...
Mr. Brown, just a second.
Now, I mean, people think non-resident rates are still excessively high. It was Mr. Leyman-Berg's recommendation. The initial recommendation was $25 a person, no matter who you are, if you come in, you're a non-resident, $25 a person. So we scaled that back to $10 plus the East Penn School District resident, which I still think is excessively high. I mean, if you show up at the pool and they say it's going to be $18 to come in, and there's two hours left in the day, I think it's excessive. I just think it's an excessive price. But there are also, my other concern relates to the season passes. And if someone comes and says, "Well, okay, 18's too much, but I can buy a season pass for," I think right now it's $150 for an adult to buy a season pass, and they say, "I want to buy a season pass," and you say, "Oh, I'm sorry, you can't do that." But you advertised at the beginning of the year that I could buy a season pass, and now you're not letting me. I think that's one of, I think the season pass issue is one of the concerns, because I don't have a problem with it next year saying, "Non-residents can't buy season passes." But if they could have bought a season pass on June 30th, and they can't on July 1st, it seems slightly arbitrary to me that they can't purchase a season pass anymore. Now, it probably was my recommendation to say, "No, you can't buy a season pass." I just didn't realize how quickly this was going to turn around and happen. So I'm not sure what, I'm not sure what the right answer is. I think we would be making a mistake not to make some changes. I was at the pool Memorial Day, and I had two residents come to me and said, "What can we do about this? This is a major issue in their minds." And they're just normal people that don't, even though we personally just knew who I was, and I've seen them before, and said to me, "What can we do?"
Mr. Brown.
I wanted to throw out a number to you, Mr. Barrett, and to see what kind of, my thinking was, I have to say, we agree with Mr. Holtsaper on, that I believe it's still a little excessive, but my numbers would be, for 500, it would be $4. Everything increased by four, so from the, so 6 through 17 will be $10. Adult 18 and over will be 11. And for 62 years or older would be 9. I just believe being $16 for senior citizens is a little excessive. But I think this is a compromise for now, for temporary, to get us through this season. I think we can look at this next year to, again, adjust the numbers if we need to, along with Mr. Holtsaper's concern with season passes. But I think 4, 10, and 11 and 9 are, send a message, but also is comparable. I believe 17, 18 is a little too much at this time.
Mr. Barrett.
I personally feel they're too low. Again, I think we pushed this off for longer than we should have. According to Chief Faust, he thought that it was truly a concern, what goes on down there, and some of the potential that could go on down there. And going on that, I felt that we should, we should definitely take some action.
Mr. Schuster.
Two questions. First question is, East Penn School District residents, it says $200 for a season pass. What was it for?
It did not exist. East Penn School District resident rate did not exist. There was strictly just borough resident and non-resident. And non-residents, so they were considered.
It would have been a non-resident.
And how much was that?
Same as what is it? What's it showing here?
Yes. Yeah, basically, the non-resident rate became the East Penn School District rate, and then we added the non-resident rate. So it's a three-tiered structure instead of two.
And we are missing a family rate on the season pass list for, for families, we don't have a family price there.
No.
And somehow it got messed up, because the borough resident's family season pass costs $125. So something, something happened in the way that this resolution was created. It should be 5 and under, 6 to 17, adult, 18 and over, and then there should be a family lineup. And that family, that family number is the 125, 200, I think, so there should be a different number for adult. I don't know, I don't know what it is offhand.
Can you see if that was on the previous piece of government's...
It was.
There should be a season, there should be a family price for season passes, and the adult price is different. This family's $125 for residents.
Family, including children 17 and under, is $125 for residents. For non-residents, for family, would be $200.
And what's an, what's an adult price on that same piece of government?
For adult 18 and over, it was $80 for resident, and $150 for non-resident.
That was your issue?
Yep. And then that would stay, that would stay the same, and that $150 would be the East Penn School District resident, would be $150, not 200, for the adult. Somehow those collars got mixed up. Now, hopefully you've seen the guest pass system, which means that, Dr. Rodell, your family comes into town, and you can go buy them passes at $7 each, and take your family. You can buy five passes, your wife can buy five passes, and you can take the whole family. I have a big concern of mine, when out-of-town guests visit our residence, that they're not priced out of the pool.
Yeah. Yeah, that was absolutely a concern, and discussed for a while, what would be a way that we don't discourage our residents from using it, which is really what we, exactly what we want, is our residents using it, and if they're bringing their guests.
Mr. Brown.
Mr. Barrett, earlier you said that you got some other prices. Could you get, did you go out, other municipalities, or other private entities, or...
No, I was saying that we had other numbers, not that we...
You didn't go out.
Correct. Yes, meaning that the numbers that were presented to us...
By any chance, did any of us...
We did do that before, this is last year, the year before, the year before that, basically. Topics have been, come up many times. And in almost all circumstances, we are below regular rates for borough residents, and also, not everyone has a East Penn School District type rate. Most people just did the two rates and had a non-resident, and we were often higher, or often lower, their other pools' rates were higher. So you remember, we did have an increase in borough resident and what was then non-resident, I think it was two years ago.
Yep.
It was about a dollar increase.
Mr. Schuster.
One question. I read the letter here about some of the concerns. I guess the one that sticks out the most to me is that they have the pavilions rented out for the summer, and they've already disclosed these rates to everyone who rented those. So if I'm somebody who rented one of these, and then tomorrow I find out that these rates have increased, I mean, how many people are at pavilion times that?
A lot, there's certainly potential.
Right. That's, that's the thing that stands out the most to me in this letter.
If we wanted some sort of policy on how to work that, we could, but I think, I think there would be a lot of minutia there to...
Yeah, I mean, there would be a lot of minutia.
Somehow you would have to, you'd have to advise them of, for a resident, being able to buy guest passes, and maybe if they bought a pavilion, you could make an unlimited amount of guest passes that person could buy for the remainder of the season. And I don't know if that would have to be official, if that's something staff could use their discretion in, I don't know if we'd be making a mistake by doing that either. Because then is it, does it then, and I guess from, from anyone who rents a pavilion going forth, they have to know that these are rates for non-residents now. And it may, it may change people renting pavilions, too. People may rent pavilions specifically because they want to go to the pool all day. I don't know that. I don't know, I don't have any, one of the issues I have with this is I don't have the data that I need to make the decisions. I did speak to the pool manager, I did speak to some of the people at the pool, and I understand the concerns there, but I don't have the data to know how many residents versus non-residents we serve. I know Memorial Day, it was, it was way out of, it was a big difference between that. Now, they did say to me, "The only issues of days like that are weekends and holidays."
Mr. Brown.
And I think that even when we do get the data, there is one element that we can't predict, is that if, I think, based on the phone calls that I've received, letters, et cetera, or just general conversations, is that there are a number of residents that have just stopped going to the pool. And so we may lose some revenue initially, but those residents that concluded from years of the pool not being what they want, decided to go somewhere else, may now give it a second chance and end up staying at our pool, which is really what we want. We want, we want that.
Mr. Brown.
The only, to kind of reiterate, Dr. Rodell, I was down at the pool today, and kind of figure, trying to figure out how, you know, we can implement as soon as possible, to clarify who's a non-resident East Penn School District. I feel that we don't, we don't have the equipment there, the database there, to do that at this time. And I just really feel that, that we need to... And I, and I just really feel that the, that we need to look at this and let this year go by. I totally agree with you, Mr. Barrett. This has been up year after year after year. But I think we need to work out some logistics and some database issues and, and some, because really, we have a paper signing that says, "Show ID." And we have a sixteen-year-old. Who's going to take on an adult? Let's be honest with, you know, it's, I don't think we have the right tools in place. Do we have to fix this? Absolutely. Is right now the right time? Maybe we need to work on some things. That's my own personal opinion.
Mr. Brown?
My concern is just that it's gone on for too long. Sometimes you get things done, push the envelope a little bit, and it will get done. I mean, I was confident that, I mean, Mr. Clapper and both the chief were giving us absolutely accurate information. They were clearly concerned. And sometimes when something arises, I mean, Mr. Clapper felt confident that he could make it work, so.
Dr. Waddell?
I'm still concerned about what we're trying to fix. And the reason I say that is when I see a letter from Christine Snyder, and the pool manager, says, "We have not had to call the Amayus Police at all this season, ask any patrons to leave, and call the auxiliary police for any events inside the pool area."
Your, your chief of police will disagree with this.
Well, that's the question, is we have a pool manager that's not usable or...
Your incident on Memorial, your incident on Memorial Day was more serious than what that letter indicated as well.
And that's one day. I mean, we're talking pervasive...
Your chief of police has indicated to me that over the past five years, it's gotten progressively worse. Now, you're only, what, three weeks into the season? Are we three weeks in now?
Two.
Two weeks in, and on day number one, they had a problem. I think that's where his issue stemmed from, is that on day number one, they had a problem, to the point where somebody had reported that an individual said something that could have been a very legitimate threat. And I think his concern is that, you know, let's stop talking about it, because when something happens, whose fault is it then? And he's saying that over the past five years, it's gotten progressively worse. Granted, we haven't had to call the police this year. That's absolutely correct. Jay Clapper's done a very good job over the past couple of years, making sure that when lifeguards call him, situations are diffused. I think the real question is, do you want to do it now or later? Or do you want to do it at all?
Do you have a motion on that?
The motion has been properly seconded and we're still under discussion, so is there any further discussion?
Yes. Because in that motion, it does not include the correct E structure. It needs to include the family rate, which we did discuss about.
So you want to amend your motion to include the family rate?
Yes. And I'll read them just so that we know what the categories are. There's five and under, six through seventeen, adult eighteen and over, sixty-two years and or older, and then family rate. Those are the five categories, and the rates would, going in that order, zero for five and under, six through seventeen would be forty dollars, adult eighteen and over would be eighty dollars, sixty-two and older would be twenty dollars, and the family rate would be one twenty-five for borough resident. And then East Penn School District rate would be zero for five and under, ninety-five dollars for six through seventeen, one hundred and fifty dollars for adult eighteen and over, sixty-two years or older, thirty dollars, and family rate would be two hundred.
The family rate for East Penn School District residents? Two hundred. It was two, it was two hundred.
That's what I said.
I thought you said one fifty.
That's for adult.
For adult.
For adult.
For adult. Eighteen and over, right. So you're amending your motion to include those figures?
That's correct.
Mr. Holtzaber, will you amend your second?
Yes, ma'am.
Any further discussion? Dr. Waddell?
I don't have a problem trying to fix the problem. I guess, Mr. Pepe, would, ultimately, it's not for you on this one, but are you convinced that we have the resources to make this work? I think it's not going to be seamlessly, I understand that. But are you convinced that we have the resources to make these, the changes are needed, and that we, that Mr. Clapper's going to have the resources he needs to make this happen over the couple of weeks it's going to take to get all this done?
With one hundred percent certainty, no. I don't, I can't tell you one hundred percent that if you were to adopt it today, are we going to be rock and roll in joy first? I can't say that with one hundred percent. Could I say with ninety-five percent, yes, but one hundred percent, no?
Can I just say this? I mean, it's really, like, if I were to say, like, if someone gave me fifteen minutes to figure out how to do this, I could do it and just pull up, again, the database, it's going to be on an Excel file, a laptop, if you need one, I'll find one, I'll donate it. And for, and you put the database in, type in the address, and you have your answer. Do they live here or not? I mean...
Yeah, by no means are those my concerns.
Yeah, that part of it is...
That's not my concern.
Okay.
Yeah, my concerns are more of the people factor.
Just dealing with an angry customer, you're saying?
Yeah, just, you know, to expand, you know, the angry person, the marketing of it, we need to definitely market this.
I agree.
You know, the training of the employees, make sure the cash register is ready to go. There's, there are some logistics, I know, to a period left, blocking it pretty quickly. Do I think we can do it? I do think so, with one hundred percent certainty. I can't, I can't say that.
You know me well, Dr. Waddell. I think, what would the citizens want us to do? They would want us to fix that problem. The question is, now, can we have a reasonable presumption that we can get it fixed starting July 1? And that's why I asked the question. I don't want people standing here complaining because we didn't have the resources or the commitment or the training, whatever, to do it. If you tell me ninety-five percent, I'll give you ninety-five percent. Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
My question is, I know Mr. Clapper said he would, or he would be willing to oversee this transition. Is, my question is, is this really something that we want Mr. Clapper to oversee in a role of Public Works Director? I know the pool falls under that, but is this something maybe for Chris Snyder or for Mr. Pepe to oversee, or the pool manager?
First of all, Christine Snyder should not be involved in the swimming pool. We've all talked about that in two thousand thirteen. She will have no, nothing to do with the swimming pool other than finances. So therefore, I mean, with that being said, it'd be a perfect time to transition the whole thing, the Public Works Department, to be honest with you. And that would be my point. Secondly, I do believe that it should fall under Public Works.
Okay.
But I think there's some logistical things that, that are in, you know, for now, Christine and I are going to have to coordinate for sure.
Thank you. That's, it was just a question I had, that, yeah, discussions come up for a while, kind of a question how that ever got there, but sometimes, it's been around for a long time, sometimes practice and procedures is what it is, and eventually this has changed, so...
Any further discussion? The last call. The motion has been properly seconded. All those in favor? Five eyes. Those opposed? Mr. Brown's opposed.
All right, so as I said, most of this would go pretty quickly. One would not go predicted. So I have nothing else on my agenda. We'll be meeting next on July 3rd at three thirty. Progress.
On your desk this evening, there is a letter from Christine Snyder to appoint another lifeguard. Do you understand that real quick?
Surely. We have a request here from Christine Snyder, who's recommending to hire Austin Bacardi of Out of Town as a part-time lifeguard at a rate of seven dollars and twenty-five cents. I'll place that in the form of the motion.
Second, Mr. Holtzaber. Discussion? Mr. Holtzaber?
When Mrs. Snyder makes a recommendation for hire, she never includes any information on the person to be hired. Every other person does. Just a point I have, every other person, every other person that I recommend hire for, we either, we see a copy of the application from every other department head, so if Mrs. Snyder from now on could just include, and she probably doesn't know that everyone else does that, but it just doesn't happen when it comes to her, and I'd like to see this.
So noted. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Three six eyes. Now, I will allow you to report progress.
Progress.
All right. Public safety. We have two items on our agenda this evening. The first is to hire a part-time paramedic. Chief Nodemaker is recommending that we appoint Kenneth Dean Carr MCO as a part-time paramedic at an hourly rate of nineteen dollars and fifty-four cents. His application is included in your binder this evening. And that came as a two oh recommendation from the committee, and Mr. Barrett did not make our meeting last week, so is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion, Madam President.
Motion by Mr. Brown is our second. Second by Mr. Barrett. Discussion? All those in favor? Three six eyes. Also in your binder is a request from Chief Rice to appoint Crystal Klepek, K-L-E-P-A-C, as a photographer for the fire department. It's not uncommon that the fire department has their own photographer. She will be working at the direction of Chief Rice. He will make the determination when she is permitted to enter a fire scene, and she will be equipped with the proper safety gear. And the committee is recommending her in the two oh vote.
I'll make that motion, Madam President. I'll hire Crystal. How do you say her name?
Klepek.
Klepek. As a photographer.
Motion by Mr. Brown is our second. Second by Mr. Barrett. Discussion? Mr. Schuster?
Question, it's a full-time position as a photographer? Is it always paid?
Just designated where there's a fire call.
Just, they're just paid when there's a fire call?
She's not paid. It's a voluntary position.
Okay. But then the letter says something about insurance.
She'd be added to our insurance, to our workers' comp, in case she would get injured.
Okay.
But she would be under the discretion of the chief and called only when needed.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Three six eyes. As you can see through our committee report, we went over quite a few items. If anybody has any questions, I'll entertain those questions. If not, I will report progress for our next meeting, September for July 12th at three p.m. Mr. Brown, this is to General Administration, Madam Waddell.
Thank you. I have a question. Letter eight A, eight A in your binder. We've actually done eight B on the report, the special undertaking commission, songs and some of the air pre-waiver. We are recommending three zero to approve the waiver because this is, as Mr. Barrett likes to put it, we essentially be paying ourselves to charge them. So make that in the form of motion, the waiver to be approved.
This is our second. Second by Mr. Barrett. Discussion? All those in favor? Three six eyes.
Letter C C, tab C C, is the resolution for district partners. This one has to be quite a bit longer than I envisioned it being, so, Mr. Pepe, this has to do with purchase of a property that someone has walked through, and this has to come out of the district partners, and we have to do this before they can do it. Mr. Pepe, you took a look at this, is there anything else on this?
I did, I did review it, and I do agree with you, Dr. Waddell, that it was, it had a lot more detail than what we had anticipated, so I forwarded it to the solicitor. He didn't have as much time as I would have liked to review it, and that's certainly my fault. However, I think I'll let Solicitor Dimick comment on, on what he reviewed in the, in the agreement.
I received it this afternoon, and I immediately went to work on it. It's multi-page, as I guess you could see. There are some issues with it that I had, that I could see right away. I highlighted the issues, I contacted Attorney Stover. He agreed with me on, I'd say there's about ten or eleven issues in here he wanted to make changes. I think it's more of a timing matter now, and as an option to you, if you so desire, if you could pass this subject to the solicitor's final approval and review. And I still, the signature will still be by the President of Counsel, but once I've, once I sign off on it, you basically are putting it in my hands. Most of the things are, in fact, all the things are legal that are in here. That what I'm trying to do is protect you as much as possible, and make sure you have identity, property, proper insurances, proper agreements that sort of insulate you to the best extent possible. You won't be a hundred percent, because there's a chain here. You're going to be the municipality, then there's going to be the, what do they call it?
Sub.
We have a special name for it. And then there's the sub one.
Sub.
So it passes right on down the chain, so I can't give you a hundred percent assurance, but I have worked on it. I think I can put it to rest within the next week. And Attorney Stover and I work well together. I don't think there'll be much problem if you desire to do that. The other thing, if you put it off now, I think our next meeting is middle of July.
Right.
Do we have a deadline date for this agreement at this point?
Terry is here.
I think they wanted it by, according to Attorney Stover, he wanted it by before the end of June. I could be wrong, but that's what he told me.
Yeah, this might be...
A question, Terry. I read through this on page nine, number sixteen, and that seemed to be the key clause that we were looking for, that should have no liability in agreement or responsibility for coming along and brought. You're saying it would be more than that?
Well, that is about the eighth different way it was placed in there. That's not the only way there. I, I wanted us to be named as an additional insured. There's a couple of things that didn't make sense. First of all, little things I found, it's the, their name is actually Amayus Main Street Program. They are not the Amayus Main Street Program, Inc.
Or partners.
Oh, you're talking, I'm talking about the, Amayus Main Street Program is not, no, it was a corporation. It is not, Inc. is not in its name. All right, so just to give you some idea of some of the things that I had suggested. On page two, I wanted to hold harmless, to include and defend, because the cost of defense is very expensive. The Separation Act was not mentioned in page, on page three, as well as the Steal Act. Number four there, I wanted it and defend, and including claims by employees of the contractors and subcontractors, so that we don't get whacked with some workers' comp issue where they try to work around and, and say that they're not protected from that. I wanted it whole or in part on page five. I wanted us to be an additional insured, which should be primary over all other insurance, and that's also on page five. As I say, Attorney Stover agreed with me on each and every item here.
Right, if I may, I think that we, as a body, agree that we want to make this happen. This is a wonderful project for our downtown. The timeline is certainly a little tighter than any others would like, but we're not having that first meeting in July. We need to make this happen, so are we comfortable doing, as Attorney Dimick has suggested, to, to make the motion in a way that allows he and Jack Stover really to, find a way to make it happen?
I feel we are. I mean, essentially, we're kind of doing that every time that we ask him to do something anyhow. It's going to come back to us. We would obviously get another chance to, to read through it, but a lot of this is legal jargon, which, last I checked, none of us have a law degree, so...
I, for one, want to make this happen for them.
Then we need a motion.
How would, how did, I'm trying to, how does this move, if you're a Madam President, where did you make it?
Your motion would be a motion to adopt the resolution based on solicitor's review and recommendation. Is that all we need?
Based on the solicitor's approval, add changes if necessary.
So what?
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Barrett. Discussion, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, just a quick question. Is, I see David Brokait's name here. Once is, in the beginning here on page one, it authorizes David Brokait as secretary, but at the bottom then, on the first page in the big paragraph, it says Donna Marks is the secretary. So can I get clarification?
It's going to be Donna Marks.
It's Donna, David Brokait is leading the area.
Okay.
And at the last meeting, which Mr. Pepe and I attended, Donna was voted in as the secretary. And that was done after this was all taken down. Good question, thank you.
Any further discussion? We have a motion that's been properly seconded. All those in favor? Three six eyes.
Should cover everything else I have.
Do you want to talk about your monthly flyer? On a maybe?
Have a--
On a maybe?
Yes, thank you.
Have a flyer that we're going to put out to the community, hopefully monthly, Mr. Pepe? Whatever. It's really one, weekly would be nice.
We'll go monthly, thank you.
Would some of us just feel that there's just a lot of negativity at times in the community, and we should be putting out the good things that are happening? There's so many good things that happen this evening. It's really brainstorming, we're looking for somebody called the Amaya's Communicator. News you can use, we'll have it at some of the events, and we've got variety at the concert, and we had yesterday at the concert, so. Thank you, Mr. Clapper, for bringing us here. Appreciate it.
Progress, Dr. Woodow. Thank you. Budget and finance, Mr. Hall Safer.
Thank you, Madam President. Two items on my agenda this evening. The first would be the letter DD Billist. And I'll read the Billist. Resolution twenty twelve dash eighteen, resolved by Borough Council to authorize payment of the June eighteenth, twenty twelve, Billist as follows. Billist, two hundred and twenty-two thousand seventy-five dollars and ninety cents. Payroll number twelve, one hundred and thirty-one thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars forty-one cents. Payroll taxes, forty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars eighty-six cents. For a total of three hundred and ninety-six thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars forty-six cents, done this eighteenth of June, twenty twelve. And I'll make that into a form of motion.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Shostak. Discussion? All those in favor? Three six eyes.
Also on my agenda is the Soapbox Derby information. I believe you can find that at letter, guessing, I was going to guess C.
D.
D. Letter D is the letter from Mr. Garloff requesting to hold the Soapbox Derby. The only concern would be that there are associated costs with the Soapbox Derby. It was estimated a few years ago by Mr. Clapper to be approximately three hundred dollars in public works labor. The Budget and Finance Committee discussed and is comfortable waiving those fees. We voted three to oh to recommend to Council to waive the fees associated with setup and teardown of the Soapbox Derby. So I'll make it into a form of motion that we waive associated fees for the Soapbox Derby, the Lehigh Valley Soapbox Derby Association.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Shostak. Discussion? Mr. Brown?
Mr. Hall Safer, for clarification, have they donated in the past a--
I think they have. I believe Mrs. Wetzel came and made donations to us in the past.
Right, correct.
I think you're right.
And that's why we would waive the fees?
No, we would just waive the fees because we feel it's a good media event. Yeah. And it was nothing, we never, we never worried about the fees associated with it before. It was no different than any other event we have in town, replacing a few trashcans and barricades out. But there was public comment associated with this one about waiving the fees. So then Mr. Clapper went back and figured out what he felt the fees were. I think three hundred dollars is excessive for cleaning a few bathrooms, moving a few trashcans. I think they, I think they do the hay bales themselves. I know we don't fund the hay bales that they have in the end. It's a good organization, it brings a lot of people into Amaya's, and that's Saturday and Sunday, Ridge Street's path. So we're very comfortable waiving those fees.
Any further discussion? All of the favor? Three six eyes.
I believe that's it for my committee. I'll report progress.
Thank you. Community relations planning is available, Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Madam President. Nothing for official action, but a quick update. The flagpole is, should be delivered here for the BFW pocket park. Is it here? All right, thank you, Mr. Pepe. And also, we are closing out the tree vitalization grant. All the trees have been planted, and we sent our invoices and our memo, as Mr. Shostak alluded to earlier at the Budget and Finance Committee. We have submitted all our invoices and everything to the county, so hopefully we'll have that closed out a hundred percent here in the next few weeks for the tree vitalization grant. Any other questions or comments? I'll report progress.
Thank you. Uh, how committee, Mr. Barrett?
Progress.
Thank you. Personal appeals, part two. Anyone from personal appeals, please step forward, sign in, state your name and address for the record review in five minutes. Hearing none, Borough Managers' reports, Mr. Pepe. Or you want to start?
As your significant revenue was spent since early June. Any questions about that, if you're free to ask? If not, I'd like to move on to your attachment. Binder. Today, Brown and Brown presented the first set of bids from insurance carriers for our workers' comp, the automobile. And you skip all the happy stuff, you can go to page twelve, that gets you to where you need to be. The good news is that the automobile insurance per vehicle is going to go down. The cost per vehicle in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve was five hundred and thirty-two dollars per vehicle. Two thousand and twelve to two thousand and thirteen, in fact, the July first, it would be five hundred and nineteen dollars per vehicle. That would be, that quote would be through EMC, partnered with the workers' comp. If you look up page thirteen, just as I had been alluding to, to you for several months now, we knew we were going to be in trouble getting quotations for workers' compensation insurance. That was definitely the case. Brown and Brown worked very hard for us, I was very happy with EMC need. We did work out a bunch of concessions with EMC, although the insurance rate ticked up. A lot had to do with the fact that our experience mod factor went up from one point one four three to one point two five two. That in itself caused thousands, several thousand dollar increase. But what we were able to do was, A, we entered into their dividend program, which means as a group as a whole, our, you know, our municipality and other clients, Brown and Brown, and Lehigh Valley, do well with EMC next year, they'll cut the dividend, just kind of like our insurance program works right now. It could be up to twenty-five percent. This past year, it was at five point three percent. So a dividend of five percent would give us back about twenty-two thousand dollars. Couple that with, hopefully, we get our five percent safety committee credit with the state certification starting next year, that's about an eighteen thousand dollar savings. Our numbers start finally going back down. If we stay off the injury list, our numbers will start improving dramatically. Hopefully, in the next twelve, twelve days or so, we have no injuries, that will knock that mod factor down again because our fiscal year ends on June thirty, as far as for the insurance part of things. So I'm hoping, I mean, the encouraging news is that I think we're at the peak on our way down the other side. The bad news is that we're still paying for two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten. Two thousand and eleven was a good year, two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten. We're not, unfortunately, you, you have to, when they, when they quote you, it's three years combined, that's how they do your quote. So your insurance for workers' comp, my recommendation is to, for you to accept the quotations from EMC, once again, at the amount of three hundred and seventy-two thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars. You can see that that is considerably less than the next closest, which was four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And if you did a five thousand dollar per loss deductible, it was at three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, and that was the SWIF. A bunch of the other ones, obviously, have concerns with going with us. We get the mod factors down, we get the experience rates down, we get the dollar amounts down. These companies are going to start jumping off, or we have to do our part first, which is why we have the Safety Committee in working towards those goals. And that's the good news today.
Can you call that good news?
No. We have good news coming up, though. So I would ask you to accept the quotation from EMC.
We're a motion to that effect. Motion by Mr. Brown. Is there a second? Second by Dr. Woodow. Discussion? All of the favor? Three six eyes.
Just want to inform you, I say an email tag to tell you that the police department did vote on the proposed union contract, which I think President Gilmore will discuss with you. They did vote to approve the proposed contract as is. So that is the good news. And progress.
Thank you. I do need an executive session. I guess we do need to read that? All right. So I do need an executive session for contract negotiations and a personnel matter. I do anticipate action when we do return. And we are in recess at eight forty-five.